I'll order the regular meeting of the Grant County Commission. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where all nations are under God and indivisible, with the liberty of this world at all. My student's flag will stay in New Mexico with the highest symbol of our friendship among United cultures.
Is there any changes that need to come on the agenda?
None that I notice.
Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
One second.
One second. There's a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. First item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing. Discussion regarding ordinance number 1205 authorizing the issuance of Grant County New Mexico Hospital and grocery receipts tax revenue bonds, Gila Regional Medical Center project, Series 2012 in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $10 million for the purpose of defraying the cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping and expansion of the Gila Regional Medical Center. Is there anybody who wants to come before us today for the public hearing? Yes, John.
Mr. Chairman, in the audience we have Mark Valenzuela here, Perry Bendixson, who is the bond counsel, and also Brian Bentley, the CEO of the hospital. Welcome. And Perry can talk about, there's been a little bit of changes we spoke Tuesday from when we originally presented this to the commission about three weeks ago almost until now, and I kind of touched on it, but Perry can go ahead and give you an update.
Hi Perry.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, members of the commission. Perry Bendixson with Brownstein Law Firm in Albuquerque. The ordinance in front of you is for the issuance of up to $10 million in hospital net revenue and grocery receipts tax bonds. These bonds we would plan to issue before the end of the year so that we can have these be bank qualified, which makes them more attractive for purchase by local banks. They are backed by the net revenues of the Gila Regional Medical Center, and should those be inadequate, the first one-eighth of the grocery receipts tax, county grocery receipts tax. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody from the commission that has a question for Mr. Bendixson? Seeing none, thank you very much. John, anybody else want to talk?
I don't know if Mark wants to kind of explain what the process would be.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Mark Valenzuela. I represent George K. Baum and Company, which is serving as financial advisor on this transaction. A quick update, I spent some time, and I'm sure the hospital maybe want to address this, spent some time last night with the hospital board discussing the approach, and they're certainly supportive of this effort. From this point, what we would do is seek out competitive bids from local banks and other banks around New Mexico who may want to buy this debt. And we would do that over the next few weeks and bring that information back to you so that you can choose the best choice from an interest rate perspective and also from a local bank perspective to ensure that they have fair access to these bonds. And then we would come back with a formal pricing resolution on this transaction, which the commission would adopt, and then we would lock that in and commence to close this deal. That would happen before December 31st, likely mid-December timeframe. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have on this particular $10 million.
Any questions for Mr. Valenzuela? Thanks, Mark. John, anybody else? Brian, did you have anything to say today?
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, commissioners, thank you. Really, Gila Regional wants to thank the county for the tremendous support and cooperation we've gotten. As Mark indicated last night, our board approved a measure to support moving forward with getting up to $20 million in bank qualified bonds, and we very much appreciate all the help we've been getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, is there any discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all those, if we want to get a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the ordinance number 12-5.
Can I second? The motion is proper second to approve the ordinance 12-5. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time... What's the matter?
No.
Okay. At this time, we are going to stand in recess. We are going to a Veterans Day ceremony at Jose Barrios Elementary School.
You want to send the questions in here?
No, because it's not quite 9:15 in the commission. We have Mayor Bousch in the audience. Is he on the agenda?
On business items. The item D, under new business, I don't know if the commission has...
Sure, I think that's up to the commission.
Sure. I think I'd be going on to, then that way Mayor Bousch can go on.
Let's go ahead and let item... Oh, what is it? Item under 7D moved right prior to the recess. So Mayor Bousch, if you want to come up?
Thank you for giving an opportunity to be here this morning and express the concerns about the water line project from Fort Barrett to the new Fort Barrett Medical Center. The project as we know it, we feel as though it could have a negative impact on the village as far as financially, and we're concerned... Couple of things I'd like to mention this morning are questions we have. First is about the, like I say, the water quality of the water coming into the village. It's been expressed a few times in different meetings that the infrastructure in Fort Barrett has collapsed and broken, not working, and we were wondering if, you know, the quality of the water coming into our system is, you know, has some question about that. And the fact that the county, well, would like to move a water line into the city limits and connect to our water without consent from the village kind of violates one of, if not possibly two of our ordinances. And I know the county doesn't want to violate any rules or break any laws, so I would recommend that maybe the village and the county to get together and discuss this project in its entirety, and maybe we can come to some kind of an agreement or solution on it before the project gets too far along.
Mayor Bousch, has there been any meetings between the county and the village up to now?
No, there hasn't been no comment, not listening to my next issue or comment.
Let me clarify something right there. For the commissioner and the mayor, it's not a county project. It is a state project. We were asked by the state to do some engineering on the project, and that's the only thing that we are doing, is a little bit of engineering. So it's not our project.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Guerra over property control, and he said that, he told me, now, I'm a little confused, because he told me that they signed off on the project or they agreed to the project because the county initiated it and the county is moving forward, they're the lead person on it, and so that's why I came here. So I'm really, really confused.
So, no, and the way the project had started, during the construction of the Fort Barrett Medical Center, there had been discussions with Department of Health about a secondary water source to the hospital, because if currently if something happens to the infrastructure of Santa Clara, there's no secondary water source to feed the hospital. They would be out of water. And so it was discussed back then, and then probably about a year ago, the state approached us and asked us if we would go to New Mexico Finance Authority and get a $50,000 planning grant of the state. It was Department of Health and the Property Control, both of them, because they're not eligible for the planning grants from New Mexico Finance Authority, so they asked if we would go and get a $50,000 planning grant to do the preliminary engineering and design of a water line, then we would turn that over to them, and then it would be their project and Grant County's out of it. And then they would choose whether or not they were going to construct a line, how they did it, whatever. Grant County wouldn't be involved. Our only involvement was to acquire a $50,000 planning grant and do the preliminary engineering report, and that's all we're doing. And at the end of that, New Mexico Finance Authority knows, and the State, Department of Health, and Property Control both know, we're just going to hand over that report to them and say, here, this is what the engineers feel is the best route, if you were to route a water line from the overhead, the aerial tank, to the new Fort Barrett Medical Center. And that's what the project is. There's no construction in the project, it's 50, and it's going to take the entire $50,000 to do the study because there's about $13,000 in environmental studies that have to be done on it, and so it's going to take all 50 to do the preliminary engineering report, and it won't even complete the full design of the project, is what the 50 will do. And that's where the project stands at this current point.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, like I say, we still have concerns that, you know, it's something that's going to impact our community, and, you know, up to this point, no one has discussed anything about us, you know, we would like to be involved with the discussion, so you're telling me that it's that the Department of Health is the lead person on this project and they're... Did I understand that correctly?
My understanding is it's Department of Health and Property Control, they're both funding the project, 50-50 funding if they build a water.
You know, it's in the city limits, I don't understand why maybe they didn't come to us and have us do it, you know? I mean, you know, that's, we're supplying water now, and you know...
Well, the majority of the project is outside of the city limits, and that might be why they did it, I don't know. Because the majority of it is on Fort Barrett property.
Right.
The city limits start once you cross the road, so to only be inside the city limits about 50 yards is, you know, guessing, I don't know where the water line exactly is, and I don't know what they're looking at tying into. But it's only in the city of, the village of Santa Clara for a small portion, and that might be why they asked us, I don't, I don't know, they just came and asked us. Maybe what we need to do is get the county, the state, and Santa Clara together to actually talk about this project. I don't think we'd care if Luna or Catherine tried to do something in Grant County and we didn't get notified, they would kind of be upset too. But I don't know if we're shooting the messenger or what.
During this session, because this project's a very, very, very slow-moving project, I don't think they've even begun the preliminary step, have they?
They started the environmental, started all the environmental.
So I know you're going to be in Santa Fe during the session some, is that not true?
This coming session?
Yes.
I can be up there, yeah.
Okay, well, let's get together, and when you're up there, when I'm going to be up there and you're going to be up there, we'll go meet, we'll sit down with Department of Health and Property Control, and we'll go over your concerns with them.
Okay, and it was kind of a, that was one of my main complaint is the fact that all this is happening without anyone contacting us, and I just, you know, feel as though that, you know, we seem to be kept in the loop on a lot of these things as they develop, you know what I mean? So if we can make an appointment to get together over there, that would be equitable solution, and we could discuss it between the three of us.
And I guess we didn't feel as though it was our job to contact you, it was the state, so that's kind of where we're at.
And then, you know, and then when I found out about the project, I contacted them, and they sent me back to you, so I'm, you know, I'm...
That's why we all need to sit down.
Right. We need to sit down.
Get together. And above all, we got to make sure that no ordinances are violated, and being that it does sit in Santa Clara. I know that we're always here to help, and you're a very active mayor over there, and we appreciate that, and...
Well, thank you.
Let's see if we can come together and get something done.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I, one thing that, and thank you very much, we'll get together in Santa Fe and discuss it, and from there, while I'm here, just on a side note, I would like to mention something, though the village of Santa Clara is very interested in preserving and developing Fort Barrett. I know the county is also very much interested in preserving and developing Fort Barrett. We know that the university has expressed interest over there. Would it be possible for us to maybe form an alliance or some kind of group together where the three of us could come together and actually strategize on how we can build, you know, actually, you know, go forward on working together with Fort Barrett?
I don't think there's a problem at all with us sitting down and discussing a possible alliance.
Okay, that would be something I think it would work, be equitable for all of us, and then we can all, you know, maybe work in a...
And I think we've always been in support of Santa Clara going ahead and taking over what they could, if possible. I think we only want to get involved if nobody else can, and do our part at that point. But if for some reason or another we can see that you can take it over and do it in a good manner which it doesn't break your city, I think we'd be very strong in support of yourself and Santa Clara.
Well, I appreciate that, but that's kind of what my thought was, you know, maybe a two- or three-way coordination I'm trying to develop that might be an equitable solution for us. But we can get together again and discuss that, I appreciate that as well.
Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
That's all I have. If we get together in Santa Fe and get it spread away, I appreciate it.
I definitely want to sit down with those guys, because that didn't seem like they did that right, because it made us be in a bad light, and we just did what we were asking.
We need to use some of those in there, so...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. At this time, I'll take a motion to recess. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will reconvene at the Veterans Day ceremony. Call back to order the regular meeting of the Grant County Commission. Next item on the agenda is, is, where is it? Well, we're not going to do the canvassing, we'll do that, we'll get back to the commission, so if we go on to the... Public input. I probably have public input that I can do.
Yeah, we need that.
Okay. Second page, approve or disapprove October 23, 2012?
I need to approve the minute, the work session is for October 23, 2012.
Can I second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, approve or disapprove October 25, 2012, regular meeting minutes? Approve, October 25, 2012, regular minutes?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports, approve or disapprove October 5, 2012 expenditure report? We went over this in the work session, is there a motion to approve or disapprove?
I need to approve the November 5, 2012 expenditure report.
Can I second? Is there a motion to approve the November 5, 2012 expenditure report? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. We have already done the village of Santa Clara, we'll move on to E, approve or disapprove the appointment of one new member and reappointment of Anthony Gutierrez and Carolyn Smith to the Grant County Food Policy Council. Does anybody have the name of the new member?
Azima Lila Forest.
Azima.
Azima. Azima Lila Forest.
Wow, I do remember that. Yes. Forest. So can I get a motion to approve those members to the food policy council?
I'm second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Contracts and agreements, approve or disapprove an amendment to Agreement Number A 1223, Professional Services Agreement with Felix Ortega for services in the juvenile probation office. This is a decrease by $10,000.
I need to approve an amendment to Agreement Number A-12-23.
Can I second? We have a motion in a proper second to approve Amendment to A 1223. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove an amendment to Agreement Number A 1224, Professional Services Agreement with Luis Alvarado for the services in the juvenile probation office increased by $5,000. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Amendment to Agreement Number A-12-24.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Amendment to Agreement Number A 1224. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1251, Professional Services Agreement with Daniel Ziegler for the service in juvenile probation office in the amount of $5,000.
I need to approve Agreement Number A-12-51.
Can I second? There's a motion in a proper second to approve A 1251, Professional Services Agreement. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions, approve or disapprove Resolution R 1244. This is a budget adjustment for the fiscal year 2012, 2013. Mr. Chairman? I don't know if you want to go over what that budget adjustment was for, was to set up the budgets for Corey Camino, both their administrative and their transportation budget, and then to set up some of the two other small grants that we get out of the year that aren't there for the June budget when we prepare the preliminary, so we have to do them as a budget adjustment because they come in weird in the year. We did go over that during the work session, so Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution of R-12-44.
Can I second that motion?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, we'll take a motion to recess of the Grant County Board of Commissioners, and we can be, just recess to begin. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board. At this time, we need to approve or disapprove the October 2012 indigent claims. We went over those at the work session. Then if there's... And no changes. No changes, so...
Chairman, you asked if we need to approve the indigent claims for October 2012.
Can I second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the Indigent Healthcare Claims Board? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we'll stand for accounting reports. Does anybody have anything to add to their accounting report that they gave on Tuesday?
I did have one question. Where are we at with the appointment of the detention center administrator?
Um, we've done some interviews and we're going to talk with the commissioners, we'll have a little bit of interview before we make a formal offer to one of the candidates. So that's where we're at. We've interviewed the ones for three internal and one external candidate.
Three internal?
Three internal candidates and one external candidate that we interviewed throughout the vision. Three of them are currently employed with us, Joey Azola, Gilbert Garcia, and Tom Doobie, and then the external was Mike Carrillo. And the chief, actually, I have pictures of Sierra. He looked familiar, and I realized why.
Randy? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to say, I think going over Felix Ortega, I think was in an accident, and so just keep him in your prayers. I don't know exactly what his condition was after.
What happened? Do you know, Randy?
I don't know.
He was on his motorola.
With his daughter.
And he broke his neck.
So it's not...
He was not injured?
So it's not a big fault, but you know, just keep him in your prayers. That's what I'm hoping for. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, any questions?
And I wanted to add one thing, I want to commend the county clerk and his staff for doing a very nice job with the elections. We're not remedies like Rio Rancho, so that's...
And we'll have, during the canvas, we'll go over some of that.
It was really nice to be looking on the internet to get results, and every time it was first, but...
Yeah.
By way far.
Seven fifty-ish?
Yeah.
Because I kept looking for Sierra's results to see what that rate was.
I went a bit.
And it was, it wasn't after midnight, I'm sure.
Going in, it was actually very slow also. I think by 10:30, they only had like nine precincts reported, so we all did a fantastic period.
Appreciate that very much. Lot of hard work, a lot of individual... Anything else for anybody? I just want to congratulate all the winners.
Yes.
And I also want to tell the people that ran that didn't win that, you know, this is the reason we have what we have, is because we can have peaceful changes of power from the top to the bottom. So the system once again works, and that's all I have. So take a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
We'll recess. We have a recess? Yes. Oh, we have an executive session. Okay. So a motion to recess. We have a motion to recess in a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Stand and recess. All right. Call back to order the regular meeting of the Grant County Commission, November 8, 2012. We've just returned from a very nice Veterans Day celebration at Jose Barrios, it was very well put on, and we'll continue on with the agenda. First item on the agenda is to... Actually, the public input, well, we can do that, but I think we ought to go ahead and recess as the County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Canvassing Board. So can I get a motion to recess?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Call to order the Grant County Canvassing Board.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We had a very successful 2012 general election in Grant County. Just some key points that I wanted to go over with everybody. 7,726 ballots were processed in our office during early and absentee. That left 37% voter turnout by the day Election Day started. I've been saying it all along, you know, for the last couple of years, the way America votes is changing, tens of millions of people took advantage of early voting and mail and absentee ballots. In some states, a third or more ballots were cast well before Election Day. So that we see the trend is moving more to early voting and absentee than it is actually voting on Election Day across the United States and Grant County. Grant County's numbers reflect that trend. For Election Day, we had a total of 5,165 ballots processed from our vote centers and our rural precincts, which left a 25% voter turnout on Election Day. I was hoping for a little bit higher numbers that day, but for whatever the reason, Grant County just didn't want to vote on Election Day, they chose to do it early and absentee, which was pretty good for Grant County because in all total, we issued 12,891 ballots for the 2012 general election, and that left Grant County way up there with the 62% voter turnout for this presidential election. For our next meeting, we'll have some comparisons from the last presidential election. I found that the delete button works pretty good for PowerPoint, so that's why we don't have a PowerPoint this morning to show you some comparisons.
I think they broke a new record.
Yeah, I think we did break a good record, and that's just a testament to the citizens of Grant County that are, they try to stay informed and they try to get out there and vote as often as they can every time an election comes up. We had 138 provisional ballots issued on Election Day. That seems pretty high, and I think it is a little bit high, and the reason for that is that we had a lot of students from the university that didn't get registered in time to vote, so they needed to vote provisionally because they weren't in our system. And then we issued out, out of those 138 provisional ballots that we issued, we issued, 62 of those were actually good provisional ballots, meaning that they would be counted with our normal election results in our canvas. Those 62 ballots that were done were, a lot of individuals that came from our rural precincts such as PA, Cliff, members, they came into town and decided to vote that day. There were some individuals that were caught off guard, not realizing that they would be handed a provisional ballot had they chosen not to go to their election day polling place, but nonetheless, those, once they're canvassed, are just like any other ballot, whether you vote on the machine or you vote provisionally, those citizens, those voters in Grant County, their ballots were treated just the same as everyone else's. The biggest thing that we have here in Grant County, and we got to thank them so much, are the poll workers of Grant County. In this little handout that I gave you, I've kind of put a couple little headlines there from KOB News up in Sanibel County. Officials attempt to sort the blame for Tuesday's voting delay in Sanibel County, five-hour wait times. Across the country, from Kurt Anderson and the AP, long lines, confusions reveal flaws in the US elections. The long lines really were something that happened nationwide, not just in Sanibel County or Burnaleo County. Anybody, I'm sure Mr. Commissioner Ramos could see from his place of business there that the women's club had a long line all... that the Women's Club had a long line all day. But if you look at the building and how narrow it is, the long, the line really wasn't that long. They had no other place to go but outside, and, uh, we had some individuals out there that were actually keeping clocks on people. And I think at the busiest point of time, the last person in line, it took them twenty-five minutes to actually get to the front of the line. So that's not, it is a little bit of a wait, but it's not, you know, a, a, a large amount of wait that you're gonna turn away a voter. You know, twenty-five minutes, you're chatting with people that you see, don't get to see. So, you know, it's not really that much of a burden on the voters for Grant County. Uh, on Election Day, there were examples in California of polls not opening on time because election workers overslept. In Ohio, Florida, and elsewhere, there weren't enough voting machines to accommodate large crowds. In other places, the devices malfunctioned or jammed. At least nineteen polling places in Hawaii ran out of paper ballots. In Pennsylvania, local poll workers were giving incorrect information, were giving incorrect information on hundreds of voters about where they need, whether they needed photo ID. Most of them didn't, just unlike, uh, just like we do in, in the state of New Mexico. In Miami-Dade County, were extremely long lines of voters at seven P.M. Poll closing time and ballots were still being cast well after one A.M. Uh, voters also endured long lines in several urban Tennessee counties and in South Carolina, where some people waited for hours. In some places in Virginia, the final votes were not cast until after eleven P.M. Long lines were also reported in Rhode Island and Montana. And the reason we bring that up is because it's a testament to the poll workers and the election bureau of, of Grant County that none of these issues came up. They work extremely hard for Grant County. They do an excellent job, and it's basically, for the amount of money that they get paid on Election Day, it's pretty much volunteer work for what they have to go through on that day. I did want to, you know, it wouldn't be right if I didn't thank a few people, so I'm gonna take time to do that. Of course, I want to take, uh, thank the Grant County Commission, Chairman Brett Caston, Commissioner Gabe Ramos, Kristy Miller, your support for the voter convenience centers. I want to thank you that. You went with the recommendation. Um, the only thing I can foresee are bigger and better voter convenience centers, more of them. Uh, I've already brainstorming ways to do so. I've already talked to, uh, our emergency, our emergency management coordinator, Gilbert Hilton, looking at ways to possibly get, um, uh, some equipment in here for voting purposes. Uh, that way, we can extend, uh, the voter convenience centers out to individuals. You know, perhaps even going as far as making San Lorenzo Elementary School a voter convenience center. Cliff High School, I know that they probably have some type of internet service at their schools, so we'd, we'd be able to do that and make those voter convenience centers. That way, in case those people were to come into town, no more provisional ballots for them. I want to thank the Democratic Party co-chairs, Mary Hopvet and Dr. Monzanares, the Republican Party Chairman Cynthia Patterson. They had, uh, actually, an excellent day if anything came up with any of their challenges or watches. We just made a phone call to them, and they took care of business that, uh, like they should. They did an outstanding job. I want to thank the Grant County manager, John Sari. He led his staff. We needed to do anything, uh, that needed to be done to make this election, uh, run smoothly. Angela Castillo, our IT person. Ralph Gower, our internet, our, uh, website guru, got us going on there so we could get those results on the internet as quick as possible. Uh, Renee Calloway, our H.R. director. Uh, those early, uh, poll workers, you know, she really came through with us and got those individuals in as needed. Of course, the city of Barrett for their facility, the town of Hurley for their facility, the Tyron Properties Owners Association, the members of the Silver City Women's Club, Justin Reese, the public works director, his entire public works crew, Tisha, Richard, Robbie, Victor, Rick, Johnny, Eric, and Lena, did an excellent job. They have to actually deliver those, uh, machines to our rural precincts. They also have to pick them up. They make sure that they're out there in time and that they're in on a timely manner. I want to thank my staff, Bureau of Elections Director, Maria Estacatio, Connie Hogan, and Liz Gomez. Excellent job. So you guys can please stand up and get a, a good round of applause. There are a lot of, there, there, there are a huge reason why those elections run smooth. Um, Grant County should be proud of those two individuals. They do a lot of work on election, during election time and in the months leading up to any election, so...
They've been doing it a long...
They've been doing it a long time, and they do, they're very good at what they do. They, I know they keep me in line. I want to thank, uh, the individuals that we brought extra in on, uh, Election Day. Tremendous help. Uh, they run out supplies to the places that need supplies. If there's issues at a polling place, they're the first ones to get there and, and help us out. Uh, Mr. Joel Poncio, Ray Castillo, Arnold Ortiz, who are our, our voting machine technicians. Dave Morales, that are internet, our, our website with the, uh, results. He's the one that got, gets those up to you, uh, so you can look at them from the comfort of your home. Uh, Mr. Les Gonzalez and Robert Muniz, those are our, our extra IT people that, you know, that way Angela can stay doing her other duties here. Those guys are out there on Election Day. And of course, the biggest thing, again, is the poll workers of Grant County. They came through for all this, for us. They did an excellent job. We definitely had the varsity team working that day, and they did an excellent job. And, uh, Chairman Commissioners, uh, I do recommend that you, uh, go ahead and okay these, uh, election results for the two thousand twelve general election.
Do I want to view the, view the ballot? I, I took a...
I'm sorry. I need to approve the two thousand twelve general election results.
Can I second?
There's a motion in the second to approve the two thousand twelve general election results. Is there any discussion on that motion, John?
I'd just like to add, thank you, Robert, for, uh, doing an excellent job, and this is a, a really nice report.
Thank you. And I also want to mention that we looked at the, at the box before the meeting convened, so everything looked real good. And again, uh, thank you all for all you do. I called probably six or seven times during the day. Everyone answered the, I mean, the phone got answered as soon as it rang, and, uh, getting information was very easy, and, uh, that's kind of why I did it, see what's, what was going on and what have you, and everything went real well. I applaud you all for all your hard work. Continue to do a good job.
Well, I, I too want to have that sentiment, that Rob, you and your crew make Grant County very proud that we have you as our clerk.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I just want to say, yeah, it's, it's great working with Rob and his staff. Marissa and Connie come in and ask, and you know they're not asking just to ask questions. When they need something, they come and ask us, and so we try and help them, drop everything and help them out as much as we can because we know they're going like crazy, and, uh, and Rob himself too is always telling us. We try and help them out, and it's a pleasure always working with his office. They do a great job during elections, special elections, general elections, the primaries. We never have any issues. We're always the first to turn in in the state, it seems like. If you go to the Secretary of State's website, Grant County's there and nobody else. Uh, and so that's a testament to what these guys do, um, that they're beating everybody in the state, not just here.
I'm having to bow to the back. I was honored to, uh, to hire him when I was coming. Good job.
That was on you right there. But, um, you know, to, to say that there weren't any glitches or any, or anything that didn't go wrong in Election Day, uh, wouldn't be, wouldn't be right. There's always problems, you know, little glitches, and, you know, thankfully, we have the staff in place that can correct those glitches immediately. Um, Grant County should be proud of, of what we have working in our office. Uh, just an example, we had an individual that wanted to test the system to see how our voter convenience centers, uh, centers worked. The gentleman found out very quickly, while he was in handcuffs in the back of a police car and taken in for questioning, that the system works. It's gonna catch you. Uh, whether the D.A. decides to press charges against the gentleman or not. He tested the system, and he found out that in fact, the voter convenience system, the voter convenience center system works really well.
So was he testing the system without y'all's prior knowledge that he was going to test the system?
He was doing it on his own.
He just chose to try to vote?
He just chose to try to, to vote twice. He was gonna see if he could in fact do so.
And then, then he decided to explain to you that he was just testing the system?
Exactly. That, he was just gonna challenge the system that day, is what he wanted to do.
Okay. Well, there's a motion on the floor to approve the two thousand twelve election results. Any further comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, ladies.
Yes, ladies. Thank you so much.
Great job. We appreciate you. Okay, we'll move into public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. You may request to be placed on a future agenda if you would like to discuss an item in more depth. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. At this time, is there any public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, at the, uh, at the Veterans Day ceremony, we were, uh, quite a bit early, and we did do some of the agenda items over there when we went out of recess. Uh, we approved the minutes, we approved the financial reports, um, we approved the contracts and agreements, we approved the resolution, and we have approved the healthcare claims board reports and indigent claims. So at this time, we need to move into executive session. Uh, can I get a motion to prove in, uh, move into executive session?
So move in second.
There's a motion to approve, moving into executive session. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Rob, can you give us a roll call vote?
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Chairman Caston, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Miller, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
We are now in executive session.